I've been trying to...
I've been trying to...
That's a good sign. I mean, I can hold your feet.
No. You must be really not here.
It's true. It's true.
I'd like to call it an order that Township of North Huntington Board of Commissioners, special meeting for Thursday, March 15th, 2008, at 7:00 PM. Roll call, Manager Silken.
Commissioner Harold, here. Commissioner Bertani. Commissioner Blasco.
Here.
Commissioner Martino.
Here.
Commissioner Bevan.
Here.
Commissioner Casara.
Here.
Commissioner Haigus.
Here.
Could everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If any residents would like to speak tonight, they can sign the book at the podium. Our first resident tonight will be Don Johnston. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Name's Donald Johnston. Address is 11350 Larwin Lane, North Huntington, 15642. I understand that there's going to be some work done down on Larwin Lane. I'd like to know the scope of the work and when it's going to start.
The work that's on... You're talking about what's on the agenda tonight? Because what we're doing is where there's a motion before the board to shift engineering that was scheduled for 2019 into the 2018 budget to start the preliminary engineering for the comprehensive work of addressing the drainage issues in that area.
Okay.
And then, as you know, we have the meeting on next Friday to address the Brownstown Road issue.
Yes, with the statement.
Correct.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, I just thought that I was under the understanding that there might be something done this year.
No, on the larger project, it's the... We're shifting engineering. So we're actually expedited for 2019 because if the board approves, we'll get some of the engineering done this year. There's going to be no physical work other than the Brownstown Road issue.
All right.
Our next resident is Joe Garrick.
Joseph Gergich, 1976 Park Hill Road. Again, addressing the chronic flooding problems. And before I address that, the creek coming down along Park Hill Road that comes up from Markview Manor area has some kind of white film all over the bottom of it, and it's clouding my creek. I have pictures. I'll bring them next Wednesday. They're being made right now. It's foamy and cloudy, and you can see where the outfall goes into my creek. It's discolored and it's diluting by the time it gets down. So if you're on Park Hill or on Lincoln Way, you wouldn't notice it. My main issue is of this flooding. I've got a DEP permit to replace my bridge. I've got thousands and thousands of dollars of damage to my property and my driveway. I don't want to replace my bridge to have it washed out. I don't have this kind of money. When that creek goes through my yard and back into the creek, it stays in the creek. Why can't you make it stay in the creek above my yard? I don't think that's asking too much. And also, as addressed in a previous meeting, Valley View Road has that outfall going in the top of the hill, still dumping into my yard. I'm not only getting washed out at the bottom of my yard, I'm getting washed out at the top of my yard. I've got pictures of that. I'll bring them to the meeting next Wednesday.
Good. Thank you. Next resident is Don Elliott.
How do you do? My name's Don Elliott, 12270 Roth Drive. I guess, like all of the people here, I'm about to hear about flooding. But appreciate... Tell the board, I appreciate you hearing me last week. From what I understand, we'll be taking further action tonight and on the ongoing weeks. I just wanted to get an update on what the plans were and what type of assistance I could be as far as providing information.
And our last resident for tonight is Robert Schuster.
Robert Schuster, 8958 Hill Drive, North Huntington. The reason I'm here tonight, I have been having a real problem with North Huntington. I filed a multimillion-dollar lawsuit against this township and Mr. Blanco. My fight isn't with North Huntington and the commissioners. It's with what's been done to us in the past year. Brookhaven Four was held up to the point where I had to lay 20... About 20 people off this winter because we couldn't finish that site. It was held up for five months. Now, I have my attorney with me. He can prove anything that I'm saying as fact. The lawsuit started out at $700,000. It's now escalated to $7.9 million and rising. This thing has to be resolved. I have given you copies of the lawsuit and everything that's going on there. So you can read it. You'll know what it's all about. We've been delayed with everything that we've tried to do in this township for the past eight, 10 years. It hasn't been easy to work here. I would like to have a meeting with you commissioners and our legal counsels both and get this resolved because it's not going to be... It's not going to go away. It needs resolved. We can't afford to do this and work in this community. And I'm sure that's what Mr. Blanco would like to see us leave. I've had meetings with Jeff repeatedly in the last two weeks, and I can only praise him. He has put out great efforts to get these things resolved. We asked for a developers' agreement on the Weber Plan. We even had a court order to get these things. It's going on three weeks, pushing four weeks now since we've got it. North Huntington Township Administration Authority had it back in three days using Kellage engineering. Now, this is a very simple thing to put out. We were told that we're not getting it through the attorneys, that we didn't have a PennDOT approval. Well, that's been in here since June. And if you go through those papers... Not since June, since January. If you go through those papers, you'll see where the permit's there. Copy to North Huntington Township, certified mail. If you go through the next thing is an MPDS permit from the Southwest Region. We have had that in here since... I don't know. You've got the paper there, but I think it's like two months. And again, copied to North Huntington Township. We were told that we're not getting it because the road was changed by Mr. Blanco from gravel to anything with an 18% slope on, to have pavement on it, and it wasn't in the bonding figures. Well, for God's sakes, add $5,000 to that, and that's the end of that thing. What's the big deal? If you read that, there's going to be litigation done on, I believe it's the first week in August because there was a court order that this stuff is supposed to be done in seven days. Now, my first question to you is, when can we have a meeting to talk about this and try to get it resolved? My second question is, when am I going to get my developers' agreement today? Who can answer?
We can answer. Is that all your questions you have for us? Or you have more?
No, there's two things.
I mean, to the developers' agreement, Manager Silken can answer towards that. And then, as far as trying to set up a meeting, if you would like to meet with the board, we would have to check everyone's schedule and get back to you on that.
All right. But this has been going on for a good while, so I would appreciate if you would get back to me with a set time.
I know. You like to work on a quick timetable. It's not going to happen tomorrow and probably not this week, but we'll try to... Our best...
I understand. You know what? This Weber Estate has been going on probably pushing a year now. And I knew I would have to take time to get the MPDS because it was near a quality stream. Well, we got it, and we're ready to go, and the equipment's there. I have a tree grinder coming in that costs $40,000 to $50,000 a month. It's going to arrive Monday. I plan on grinding trees over there and clearing that lot. Now, we're mowing the grass right now. So Jeff, can you answer my question on the developers' agreement?
We do not have it tonight. We did not get this letter till about quarter after four this evening.
Okay.
So I can get... We don't have it this evening.
We have it tomorrow.
I don't believe so because Andy's going to be off tomorrow unless...
Jeff, the developers' agreement's done. I emailed it to you yesterday. It's ready to go.
No, you emailed me a draft. I'm not going to debate this with you because it doesn't...
I mean, it's only a draft as long as we call it a draft. As far as I'm concerned, it's ready to go if everybody's okay with it.
Can that be emailed to me in the morning?
Sure.
I'd appreciate it. We'll go over it. If everything's right, we'll get the... I mean, I can get the money to back it up with a bond in a matter of three days. So then, everything's legal and above board.
If it's outside of... If it's outside of a draft form, yes. I mean, I can get it to you tomorrow.
Get me that so we can go over it.
That's fine.
All right. And then, what about... You'll set this up or...
Yeah. We'll get everyone together, see everyone's schedule, and try to get together as soon as possible.
This is very expensive, so please, do whatever you can. And I'm not talking about legal fees. I'm talking about the equipment. And I've had seven over there for five months in the one site. And please, take time to read that so you understand what's been going on. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thanks. Response to citizens input, Mr. Johnson, Larwin Lane, about some flooding issues. Believe, like we said, we can address some of that later on in the meeting. And then, Mr. Joe Garrick, I believe you already addressed some of his issues. And if you do have some pictures you'd like to bring in, if you're coming next week, you can do that. We'll take a look at them. Appreciate that. And then, Mr. Elliott as well. I guess some flooding issues down on Roth Drive. We discussed that at last week's... Last month's meeting, excuse me.
Yeah. And that's still an ongoing investigation.
Okay. Thank you. Any other board comments?
Jeff, to go along with the issue that's been on Harold Drive, is anything being practically done at this point as far as with the drain screen or where are we at?
The screen has been taken out a few years ago, so the screen that was on those videos is gone. And what we're doing is we're maintaining, making sure it's keeping clean, or taking a look at it if there's any interim measures.
Okay. And then, Andy, you might be able to answer this question a little bit. Talk with some residents off of Lincoln Way. Again, their concern is the amount of water coming off. I guess the newest developments would be kind of reinstituting Norrentown Square and then the Redstone Highlands Plan. Is there anything with the stormwater management that would possibly be causing an excess? I understand we've had a surplus of rain in recent weeks, but is there something that we may have missed or dropped the ball on? Or is everything up to code from our stormwater management from those two projects?
four detention ponds, I believe, in that entire long-run watershed, plus the one that we put in in Lyons Park. I can't tell you the acreage off the top of my head, but I can tell you it's probably a third of the township that goes down that way. The fact of the matter is, most of the homes, most of the development in that watershed took place before there were any requirements for stormwater management. You've now got... Well, there's multiple ponds in Willow Estates. So you've got Willow Estates, you've got Willow Glen. There's two ponds there. You've got two at Redstone Highlands. You've got the one at Norrentown Square. And you've got... Dartmore Estates has a pond that drains that way. So you've got five ponds. You have a very, very small pond on Jenny Drive behind Sherley Funeral. So you've got six ponds. But that's not much when you look at that entire watershed. They're all working, but there's very little land to go back and do anything to try and address the problems that are already existing. A lot of the homes that are there, particularly on Roth, are in floodplains, or a large part of their yard is in floodplains. We can't wave a magic wand to make that water go away. That's what water does in a floodplain. Park Hill Road, if you look at the area there, it's very much in a floodplain.
Anybody have anything else? Last one was Mr. Schuster, and like I said, we'll get back to you on maybe a date that we can set up that we could all meet. Okay, moving on. Work session discussion topics, Manager Silken.
Okay. The first item on the agenda is the Comprehensive Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. As you know, over the course of the last year, there was a... Environmental planning and design was engaged to do a comprehensive plan for the parks. The final draft was circulated in February. And since we did provide a pretty comprehensive funding for this, I would like to recommend to the board that, you know, if they have any feedback to make it now, or if not, place us on the agenda for the March 21st meeting to be able to adopt this plan officially and then allow staff to start making contingencies to address the recommendations in the plan. And I do have Dan here today. If you have any questions for the plan, it was circulated earlier this year.
Any further board discussion?
I'm okay with putting it on the agenda.
One thing that I'd like to take a look at, and it's a possible rejection from the school district, but possibly, we're looking at lighting ball fields, establishing some kind of partnership with the school district as far as putting lighting on the fields. We're talking about a need for parking at facilities, lack of restrooms. This could be a win-win for both the township and the school district to share cost. And, you know, I understand we have a very high school tax rate there. It may please the residents to see more facilities being offered to the residents. So that's something that I would like to see along that way. And one thing I was concerned of was some of the studies that we were looking at, $30,000 to $50,000 in the study to see the feasibility of connecting parks to one another. I don't really see the purpose of that. I'm not sure exactly what they mean by that, if it's just a marked trail system or if that's kind of a bike trail system from park to park. Mr. Mill, you have any elaboration on what it's considered to be?
First, if I may, let me just address your first concern or reservation, Commissioner Blasco. The resources you're wanting to share, and just so I hear you correctly, you're wanting to share those with the school district, perhaps maybe use some sort of agreement to use their facility in addition to putting up lighting?
Correct.
In lieu of putting up lighting?
Negotiating something with the school that they can manage it this way. It's not on the township's responsibility to manage scheduling of the fields, but take the money that we're looking to input into our parks and, again, put a partnership there. This way, we both benefit.
Sure. I follow you. And in response to your second inquiry, the trail system, one of the proposed trail systems, would be a link system, trying to link the parks to the community. Obviously, the way our parks are spread out, situated throughout the township, we certainly could not link park to park. But perhaps we can link them to neighborhoods or some of the neighborhoods that have sidewalks, et cetera. So it really would be more of a link system as opposed to hiking trails.
And then, one quick thing. I just got this in the mail today, and the third paragraph is kind of worded, it says, "A major part of the master planning process, our next phase will include working to design and administer a statistically valid community survey." Is that another additional survey or is that just kind of a, I guess, misstatement in here?
No, that's right. First of all, thank you for reading that. We put a lot of effort into that that goes to all the residents in the household, so I appreciate you taking the time to look through that. No, that is the statistics that were provided through the survey that EPD had conducted.
Okay.
And we would use those statistics when making recommendations or looking at priorities for master planning.
Okay.
Thanks. The only other thing I would have, I'd just add some concern about, you know, sometimes we do these studies and then we get these ideas of grandeur, but I think we are almost back to the basics of back to parking. It was a big concern for a lot of people, restroom facilities, and then, like we said, having ball fields and lighting. I know people might have grandeur ideas for the parks, but I think, you know, if we start those basic levels and then, you know, see where that gets us and kind of branch out. And Brian's point about, you know, ball fields and lighted fields, we had residents coming because they wanted to use, I think it was a lacrosse, a Norwin Lacrosse Club, the township fields, because it was actually too much to rent the school district's fields. So like you were saying, it's kind of a burden. So it actually might be a better advantage to kind of explore our current park system to see if there is, you know, some excavation work or whatnot we could do to, you know, increase the ball fields or, you know, usable space we could use.
I share your sentiments, President. One of the things that we look at when we're looking at the survey that was presented to us is our wants versus our needs.
Yeah.
I agree with you. You know, certainly the community is deserving and wants brand-new facilities, but the infrastructure would be a need that would be important first, and that's something we would have to address before we even broke ground.
Yeah.
To kind of jump back on another point, the ballad cabin discovery off of Robin Station, what's kind of the master plan for that right now? I know it's just kind of sitting...
That is privately owned. And then, basically, and maybe Mike can jump in, but it was kind... It was floated out towards the end of last year, and there was no interest shown by the owner. And, you know, that's basically reverted back to private because I think because of the extent that it was gutted in the renovations, there's really not much of a historical structure left, and there was just nothing for us to do. Mike, if you want to...
Yeah, that's right. It's a historic shell of a building. You have to... Okay. And there were a number of problems. This went on for several months trying to... We could never get the answers. We couldn't get really funding. Historic preservation groups interested to the point where they would fund it. And we couldn't put an organization or find an organization that would manage or operate it. So just, those are really big items that we couldn't really overcome. And it got late in the year, and the owner of the property would like to take the building... Well, it was covered up for the winter, but now I think he's going to demo what is actually a shell of a building. Now, we do have something of a recollection, a historic recollection, photography of the structure, as well as a documented history of it, which is available. So we have a recollection of it, which is helpful, but we just couldn't... We didn't see how we could take this over. And by the way, there were a lot of questions about, it's not really the best location. There were a lot of issues with making that a venue to go to, everything from parking to making it handicap accessible. It's all sorts of cost and issues, and moving it was very problematic to another location. Rebuilding it, all expensive and rather difficult. And we just couldn't... I mean, we were spending a good bit of time. We couldn't answer the main questions, let alone a lot of the other questions, like who's going to run it and so forth. So it just sort of never really fully got off the ground, and it's going to be torn down. But like I said, it was recorded. I mean, there's a recollection of it, so...
And I guess my last point is, I'm not sure if anyone's been to Indian Lake Park in recent months. One of my concerns is if any new development continues along the lake, it's taking away from the aesthetics of that park. There's been a duplex added to that, and then we're less gutted our hillside, and it's not necessarily scenic. Right now, there is property currently along Clay Pike there that possibly might be in interest of the township in preserving its natural allure before it becomes a nice residential development. So just thoughts for the board.
Any other discussion on the Parks and Recreation Open Space Plan? Thanks.
Okay. My second item is a request for the North Huntington Township EMS rescue for a... One of our Ford Explorer surplus police vehicles that is coming offline as we're replacing three. They... That would replace a 2010 Expedition that was donated to them prior. And I'd like, you know, if the board is amenable, to put that on the agenda for about next week.
Okay.
For the third item, I'm going to bump up number four to number three because Sergeant McCurdy is here, and he does have another engagement. And this is a request on our emergency response team for ballistic vests. And this is a funded expenditure... Unbudgeted funded expenditure of approximately $33,700. In the... In the past, Region 13 has been able to secure funding for these ballistic vests. However, that funding has since dried up, and they're coming to their lifecycle at the end of June, and they're requesting that we fund the funds to do the replacement for our emergency response team. And, you know, I am... My recommendation is this is a just expense if we want to have that service and the protection for the men and ladies who are involved. And it said Sergeant McCurdy is here if you have any direct questions on this request.
I don't know. Did everybody get a copy of the letter?
Yes.
Fortunately, our township's really been granted a lot of perks from Region 13. We've been in existence, our team's been in existence since, I believe, before 2005. So we've been in operation and training. We have a really good group of men, and they're very dedicated. Unfortunately, it was brought to my attention early in January that the funding is not there. The federal grants have not been as generous as they have in the past. So Mr. Hoboff from Greensburg normally spearheads getting us these vests. Unfortunately, there wasn't much legwork from my behalf that was needed in the past. And then, whenever I kind of inquired about it this year, that's whenever it was slapped in my face that the money's not there. So unfortunately, I wish I could have put it in the budget last year, but I can't go back. And this is a piece of equipment that we can't do without. And unfortunately, we could, you know, I'll jump... we could, you know, jump in cars and get rid of a vehicle and still be able to do our job, not efficiently, but we can still do our job. But these vests, we can't, we can't do what we normally do without them. So it's not something that's frivolous, or it's not the Cadillac that I'm asking for. This is underneath the state funding that's been quoted to Region 13. So I'm kind of piggybacking on them. So if you guys vote that it can't happen, I understand, but we will probably have to disband at that point in time. So, because I can't, I can't put men out there in vests that are, that they're out of manufacturer warranty. So if you guys have any questions...
I have a question for you, sir.
Sure.
The only question I have is, I agree with you, that you do need vests. And it is quite a bit of solid money.
Yeah, it is.
Is it possible to get two other quotes? I'm sure there, I'm sure there's other places out there other than Atlantic Tactical that
Yeah.
manufactures these vests for the RT team.
Yeah, that's not a problem. I can get that. I can probably have Carl Steinkopf and one of the other officers work on that.
Yeah, if you could.
Get that as soon as I possibly can.
I'd appreciate that. I don't have a problem getting them, but I'd like to see three quotes.
Thank you for your support.
Just, just to follow, because of the expense, and the solicitor could step on me if I'm wrong, but because it's over, you know, the twenty-one thousand, we'd have to do official bids for that. We wouldn't just be able to solicit quotes.
I believe that you have to do it, it's above, Jeff just said twenty-one thousand dollars. I thought it was a little bit less. We have a formal bid, we'll need to go out in an effort to get the lowest responsible price for those vests.
Okay, thank you.
It is on the coast, is it the CoStar?
It is on CoStar, but if we're going out for other bids, because it's above the threshold, we'd have to do formal bidding process, not three telephonic bids.
So what, what that means is that because it's on the CoStars, you're not required to bid this company?
Okay.
But we wanted three quotes, and the other two won't be on CoStars, and if they're less, you know, that would require a formal, formal bid proposal.
So what, to make sure I get this straight, I should give three additional?
We'll catch up tomorrow. We'll do the official, we'll do it correctly through my office.
Sounds good.
They'll just issue that as a bid spec.
Okay.
Yeah.
That sounds good. Anything else?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, the next item is the 2018 drainage projects, and I'm going to ask Bob Robertson to kind of help me on this one, as he's the engineer who's doing this. But what we're asking is to be able to shift some funds around in our engineering because of where we are with the Victoria Heights Detention Facility, which is ongoing. But the Public Works Disposal Site probably isn't going to be done this year. So what we do is, we do have some other funding is, we have Lawren Lane and Edgewood Court Drainage that is not on the budget for any work this year. We'd like to shift approximately twenty-five thousand dollars from the Spoils Project to begin the engineering on Lawren Lane and Edgewood Court. And as I said, this was, you know, it's not going to affect the budget, it's just going to shift the projects that were approved by the board in the 2018 budget process. And, you know, have Bob give you the specifics or answer any specific questions on the projects.
So the Lawren Lane, Edgewood Court Drainage Improvement Projects, if you want to run down those, because those are, I guess, new to me, other than the, you know, obviously retention ponds that were budgeted for.
Yeah, we had several significant drainage improvement projects that we would have liked to have done this year, but the budget, it wouldn't, wouldn't permit it. The three major ones, as Jeff mentioned, is the Colt Drive culvert replacement, the Victoria Heights Detention Facility, and that was seventy thousand dollars, and the Public Works Spoils Site Preparation. And combined those, that's about a quarter of a million dollars. We do have the Colt Drive plans substantially completed. We've, we've had those sent to the DEP. We're waiting for a easement from the downstream property. The Victoria Heights Detention Facility, we're going to be finishing up the survey next, next week and preparing construction plans. So we want to be under construction for Colt Drive, July or August, and also the Victoria Heights Detention Facility. We want to be under construction July and August of this, this year. The Public Works Spoil Site Preparation, we've talked to DEP about that. We have about three hundred feet of stream enclosure, and with that, it's not just a general permit. For Colt, Colt Drive, it's called a GP-11, and it's a general permit. But since we're doing an extreme enclosure and filling in on the Public Works Spoil Pile, it's going to be substantial. It's a, it's a joint permit, and it's going to take six to eight months, and we're, we're working on that now. So we plan with that fifty thousand dollars at the Public Works Spoil Pile to have some engineering and construction, but there's not going to be any construction this year. So we're going to have about twenty-five thousand dollars left, left over. The other two desirable projects is Lawren Lane and Edgewood Court, and I think they've been discussed with the, with the board in the past. The twenty-five thousand dollars left over from the Spoils Pile, I think, can do the survey work and the engineering work and actually get hard copies planned, be ready to go when, when funding is available. Now, depending on the costs for the Victoria Heights and Colt Drive, there's a chance that it, they could be under budget, and we may have some funds for construction this year. But we'll, we'll need to see how the bids for Colt Drive and Victoria Heights come in this year. But our recommendation is to take that twenty-five thousand dollars and do the engineering work and design work this year, and be ready to go when the budget is available.
So I guess, could you briefly just kind of go in a little bit of detail from prelim? Are your plans on the Lawren Drive and the Edgewood Court?
The Lawren Lane, I would look at that as three, three components. The drain, existing drainage system within the street that's, doesn't have the proper hydraulic capacity. It's, it's pretty, pretty flat. It's susceptible to the natural stream channel erosion that fills the pipe up and reduces the capacity. So we need to look at the existing system having proper grades, proper capacity for there, then go upstream at the natural channel that comes down from the building here, and look at some way of protecting it from erosion, either vegetative matting, rock, riprap, to try to prevent spoil erosion sediment from getting in the line and reducing the hydraulic capacity. Then the third component is Brownstown Road. The, we have an undersized line that connects Brownstown Road to Lawren Lane. We would look to perhaps replace that. It may be a, a public-private agreement to do that. And there's been discussions with, with PennDOT about additional drainage curbing to connect to that, that system, which ultimately connects with, with Lawren Lane. Edgewood Court, it's, it's a matter of, there's, we have some overground flow from public streets and a substantial area behind the homes on the upper side of, of Edgewood that's causing a lot of property damage. And we're looking to build an exlection system there to direct water to the township's stormwater system. So there's property damage there. And on Lawren Lane, there's an actual house basement being flooded, I believe, at least three times. Correct me, Andy, maybe two times last year and a, and a time before. So this would help alleviate that, those occurrences.
I'm okay moving forward with that plan. I know the public works, and I completely understand working with the DEP and whatnot, getting proper things in place, but I know that was a hot topic for using that as a landfill area. So obviously, the sooner we get that, the better off, I guess, we'll be. But I can understand what the time that will take to try to get the proper paperwork in place.
Sure.
Okay, I have two additional items that came up this week that I'd like to discuss with the board, and that I did provide handouts. One is our ISO rating came out, and I was forwarded our ISO letter this week. And our ISO going into the latest review in 2017, we were four residential and an ISO three in commercial. This year, our rating came out in March, and we are nine in both commercial and residential. What that is going to do, that is going to significantly impact insurance ratings for our residents and our businesses. Now, the reason we went down is that the state has not adopted the 2012 or 2015 Universal Construction Codes yet. They have this convoluted process where they need a two-thirds vote, and they're going basically line by line to see what's affected by Pennsylvania. So if you look at the chart, we went down considerably in the, in the top three, section 105, 108, and 110 with the codes, because no matter what we do internally, our codes that we're enforcing are basically antiquated codes according to UCC and the ISO. So what we're going to ask is that, that the board authorize us to submit correspondence to our state delegation and our municipal associations to urge that this become a priority in their legislative priorities, to abdicate that this is hurting the residents of Pennsylvania. And no matter what we do as a township, we can't affect the state codes. Just try to maybe light a fire under the state to start adopting these codes. And like this, like I said, there's two updates that haven't been adopted. The state is starting to look now at the 2012s, and they have, I think, twelve months to give their recommendation. So we're still, so by the time they get 2012 done, the 2017 or 2018 update's probably going to come out through UCC. So we're never going to catch up the rate we're going. Now, internally, there's a couple of questions that we're going to look at, because we've increased staff, increased certifications, but we kind of went down in our training and staff capacity. So we're going to reach out to ISO and see exactly why we kind of got dinged whenever it seems that internally we're doing everything right. But what we want to do is have the board authorize us to reach out to the, to the state delegations and municipal associations to put this as a priority.
I'm okay with that.
I'll say go for it.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, I did meet last month with the Volunteer Firefighter Association with the chiefs. And one thing that did came up is a township email for, for each chief, each of the seven chiefs. Because right now, if we're reaching out to them, we have a kind of a mishmash of personal emails, station house emails, and we're not sure who's getting what. And what they've asked is if they could have, you know, a North Huntington address that will, Chief One, Chief Two, Chief Three. And we took a look at our server. Our server doesn't have the capacity as it is. It would be roughly one thousand, one hundred and ten dollars to add those seven licenses to our servers. And, you know, the chiefs are requesting that. And from an administrative standpoint, you know, going out through the audits and trying to get, you know, you know, communications out, it would greatly enhance our ability to communicate with each of the seven firehouses.
I'm okay with moving forward with that. It sounds like it's a good resource to spend, especially to return and boost some of our technology and whatnot.
Yeah, it's a good communication thing, for sure.
Okay. Those are the items that I have for the board.
All right. Moving on, planning engineering topics. Mr. Blenko.
First item I want to talk about tonight is the Lincoln Corner Site Plan and Lot Consolidation. This is at the corner of North Thompson Lane and Route 30. There was a small auto parts store there, which was demolished last year. Initially, Dr. Alamoov, I believe I'm saying that right, wanted to build a medical office building on the parcel where the auto parts store was. The second parcel, towards the east, towards Hemfield, was under consideration for a marijuana dispensary. When they didn't get their license from the state, they no longer wanted the property, so they were willing to sell it to Dr. Alamoov. So he bought that, reconfigured the whole site last fall. He now wants to do a mix of retail and a medical office building, two separate buildings. There's significant topographic challenges on that site. It falls about seventy feet from the high point to the low point. He wants to come in from North Thompson Lane because of the severe slopes from Route 30, and the driveway would pass the retail building, then go up to the medical office building at the far end. The two buildings themselves would sit at different elevations. The medical office building, I believe, is about sixteen feet higher than the retail building. There is adequate parking for what they want to do. They're going to do onsite stormwater management, which then will discharge and tie into PennDOT inlets. We would need to be the applicant on that HOP to PennDOT. They need sewage planning, which will go to WWMA, so that has to be done by resolution. They need a approval of their erosion control plan from the Conservation District. Let me see if I'm missing anything here. I think those are the major items that you need to be aware of. The buildings themselves will be single-story buildings. That is the retail building. That is the medical office building. They are asking for a handful of waivers from the subdivision and land development ordinance. They don't know what they want to do with signage yet, so they are asking that they pull that together later on and submit that as a separate package. They are doing this project as a design-build package, so they don't know yet what type of wall their contractor will want to use. So they're asking that that be submitted at a later time, once they've got a contractor on board and he's decided what the best approach is. Any wall over four feet in height requires a building permit, so that would certainly apply to this case. The Saldau requires that parking be located behind the buildings if possible. You're not going to find too many buildings in North Huntington with the parking behind them, so they're asking that the parking be permitted in front, as shown. They would like to grade within ten feet of the property line. Obviously, they need to do that to get in from Thompson Lane, so the Planning Commission had no problem with that. They will also be very close to the state right-of-way here. The state may have a comment on that when they get the package, but from our standpoint, that's acceptable. It's no steeper than it is now. And finally, they're asking that we permit rebars at the property corners for monuments rather than concrete monuments, in that this is a lot consolidation rather than it's setting up a bunch of new lots. I don't have a problem with that. The corners are already there, and they are already marked. So the Planning Commission is in agreement with those waivers. They do recommend approval of this project contingent upon the outside agency approvals. All right, the second item is the Lyons Plan. This is a small, one-lot subdivision at the end of Myers Lane, which is off of Ridge Road. It's a fairly large parcel now, almost four acres, and they would like to split off a new lot to allow a new home to be built. Everything there meets the minimum lot size requirements. There is public sewage on Myers Lane, although it will need to be pumped to, and there is public water on Myers Lane. Really, the only condition on this would be that they need to get sewage planning approval for the one EDU, which would flow to the Turner Valley Plant. The Planning Commission recommends approval of that as well with that condition. Okay, the last item is Calvary Assembly, which is located on Pennsylvania Avenue behind North Huntington Square Shopping Center. They have an octagonal sanctuary with an exterior entrance facing away from Pennsylvania Avenue. And when you walk in that door, you open up the door and all the cold air comes in, or the cool air in the summer goes out. So they would like to do a new lobby, entry area, meeting, gathering place, which you can see outlined in yellow here. It will have tables and chairs. It will have an extension of their coffee counter, which they have now. There's a diagram of what the floor plan would look like. There's a diagram of what the floor plan would look like. It's actually going to be built into the hillside, so it will function partially as a retaining wall. As part of this project, they are going to rehab the parking lot, which may have been paved years ago, but it's now, at this point, pretty much just busted up stone and gravel, and they are going to rehab this stormwater detention pond. So there's really three components to the project. No additional sewage flows, they do need an approval from the Conservation District because of disturbing more than an acre of ground, but the Planning Commission is in favor of this, pending approval from the Conservation District of their erosion control and stormwater plan. We've looked at it, I think it should be fine. Any questions on that? Okay, that's all I have.
Thanks, Andy.
I have, I have a couple, Andy, a couple of quick questions. Don Terowski's place going up the Walmart, what's going on with that, and the Compass Bank, are they ever going to do banking there?
I have no idea. The project up by the Walmart was approved June of 2016. We've not heard another word about it since then, there were a number of conditions, none of those have been satisfied, or, I mean, I don't know where it stands in their court. We did meet with Mr. Terowski 10 days ago to talk about the two parcels that are closer down towards Key Bank, or what was First Niagara Bank when it was built, and he does have potential tenants for those two sites, and he thought maybe if he could get those sites going, those would be catalysts to start to get development coming up the hill. That may have some validity to it, because those parcels are much more visible from Route 30. If he can find the right-sized tenant to go on those parcels, that may make the rest of it happen. All right. Thank you.
All right. Any other further board comments? Just need one motion.
Motion adjourned. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0, meeting adjourned 7:48. Board of Commissioners will have a short executive session to follow the meeting.